This is a work session. We will not be taking any votes. So there won't be any recording of votes. Should the link to the outside world be broken, I need to suspend the activities until such time as that link is reestablished. And with that, I will turn it over to Director Walsh.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the record, Delilah Walsh, Utilities Director. I'm going to be turning over the first portion of our work session, which is the discussion of our water conservation plan to our expert, Rhonda Diaz.
Thank you, Delilah. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Rhonda Diaz. I am the Water Conservation Program Coordinator for the record. Today, I am going to present to you the Los Cruces Utilities 2021 Water Conservation Plan in draft format. This is only a draft of the 2021 Water Conservation Plan. I am presenting the information that was compiled from our consultants and the Steering Committee. The plan is still in review status with our City of Los Cruces attorneys, the litigation team of the Texas versus New Mexico, and additional consultants. So a little history about the Water Conservation Plan and program. The Water Conservation Plan is a requirement of our water rights, and it is to be updated every five to seven years. We submitted a update to the 2012 plan in 2019 to the board, and it was also submitted to the Office of the State Engineer. At that time, the board asked us to review the current plan and add some more teeth, if you will, to the program and the plan. And so, working with Carol Cristiano, she is my consultant. Her and I have worked together on this. She is from Lee Wilson and Associates. She is also on the call if we have any questions. And also, a committee comprised of subject matter experts from the community, which included the LCU Board Vice Chair Archuleta, Parks and Recreation, Los Cruces Public Schools, a multifamily new development sector, hotel industry, and the single-family residential category. Next slide, please. So we have established two goals within the plan. The first goal is to reduce non-revenue water to 9% of diversions. Diversions are the term used for all the water that is pumped from our groundwater through the wells. The non-revenue water is, again, pumped from our wells. It is treated, but it is not metered water. We have about 21 meters that are on utility trucks and street sweepers that are non-revenue water because it is utilities business, and they are not, they are metered, but they are not revenue. So between 2018 and 2020, our non-revenue water reduced, was reduced by 6.2%. That is equal to 1,800 acre feet per year or 586 million gallons. And that's a, that's a great report that I can share with you. The reason behind that, more accurate water meters, as you know, our program that replaced most residential and some commercial meters really helped with non-revenue water. Service-side leak detection is a fantastic program that is finding service-side leaks in addition to some residential leaks as well. But that is not what, that's not what the program is geared towards. It is service-side leak detection and better accounting of our water use. So the goal for this, I'm sorry, the... Hmm, to proceed, I'm sorry, I lost the word there. So in order to reach our goal of 9% diversions, which we are currently at 11%, we will continue to administer the leak detection program. We will analyze water savings operation from our No Des program that started in December. That is the program that was funded through the BOR Water Smart Grant, which allows us to connect to hydrants and flush systems, our water lines through the hydrants where there's no water that is wasted, you know, coming out of the hydrants for flushing, and additional staff for the Water Conservation Program to analyze and provide data for these programs. The estimated annual staff and contract cost is $196,000. Next slide, please. So this is a graph that is showing you, since 2016, I was hired and came into the program. Our non-revenue water was at 17.2% of diversions. It is currently at 11% in 2020. So that is a really good conservation measure that through those programs, they have decreased our non-revenue water. Next slide, please. Our second goal is to maintain diversions at 22,352 acre feet a year through the year of 2030. Now, this is a goal that will be maintained only if we continue to have small population, I'm sorry, low population growth per the 40-year water plan. We are also looking at, you know, meeting that goal with a new city manager that wants to bring in large industry and, and more, you know, housing being built, a lot more housing being built. But we think we can keep that diversion. It's actually accelerating the 2030 40-year water plan that would, I'm sorry. It's accelerating the 40-year water plan that states 2030 diversions will be 25,057 acre feet a year, which would be 170 gallons per capita per year, I mean, per day, I'm sorry. So if we maintain this 22,352 acre feet, that reduces the GPCD, gallons per capita per day, to 147 by 2030. Again, accelerating what the 40-year water plan states. By, the way we plan on doing this is implementing water conservation incentives. As the plan indicated, we have several, both residential and commercial water incentives for the community and our customers. And in addition to the Utility HOPE program that, as you know, has just gone public, on the, the staff side, is that, is that program very beneficial so that we can help our customers in abnormal water use, leak detection? But they can also review their consumption as well and set goals for themselves, as well as see what their bill is going to be. You know, when we save water, we save money, as a customer myself. So that estimated five-year cost of the program is 2 million, 2.9 million. And that includes, the Utility HOPE program includes additional staff, also a program that could help residential customers that do have leaks and have been detected within their service side, but are unable to pay for the, for the repair of those leaks. And another incentive or a program that we are listing is a feasibility study through a grant through BOR Water Smart. It hasn't, hasn't been done yet, but, but we are hoping that that feasibility study and, and as contributing the 50 or 75% match, whichever it would be at the time, to help us determine our reclaimed water goals and how we can improve that program. Next slide, please. So this is a chart which is showing a lot of information from 2016. On the left-hand side, it is showing you the diversion amount. On the top of each of the bars, that is showing you our GPCD, gallons per capita per day, and how that has been reduced through 2020. Our next steps for the plan would be to gather the board review comments, recommendations. Also, when the attorneys and consultants have reviewed and commented and recommended their, after their review, as well as providing a community meeting for the residential and commercial, or just whoever, it's a community meeting that will, that will be able to review the plan as well. And then finally, the plan would be scheduled for board acceptance, for the Los Cruces Utility Board acceptance. So that's all I have, and I will stand for any questions that you have.
Commissioner Sorg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Rhonda Diaz. I appreciate all your hard work and this information you presented today. But I was wondering about, is there anything in the plan that would deal with water fixtures, namely low-flow water fixtures? Has there been any discussion concerning that to conserve water?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sorg, that is one of our incentive packages. We are proposing the purchase of 10,000 aerators, faucet aerators, that would be sink and kitchen sink and bathroom faucet, which includes a low-flow showerhead as well. And as an incentive, what we'd like to do is have our, our customers allow us to go into their home, install these fixtures, and also at the same time, help them with conservation measures within the home. So those audits are also included in that program.
Okay, so is there any financial assistance for changing out faucet fixtures, water fixtures, I should say?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sorg, that would be, that is, that is our proposal, that that would be the cost of the utility to purchase those items and provide at no cost to the customer.
Okay, so what kind of a customer would be qualified for that, depending on the audit?
Um, so, this is, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sorg, during our, during our meetings, that's a great question because what came up was, all the new development already has these required low-flow fixtures. I mean, you know, you own your home, you can change that out. So really, we would be targeting the older homes, the lower-income areas that don't have the opportunity to change these fixtures, and that would save them money as well. But the, the, we decided instead of 44,000 boxes of a low-flow showerhead and two aerators that may sit on a shelf for half of the customers because they already have these, that we would reduce the number to 10,000 and then offer the audits as well.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is Commissioner Archuleta.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, this is a very high-level review that has been presented. The committee met, I think, three times, and we had a chance to review the draft information as it was being developed. But I can't, I can't overly, I want to overly emphasize the goals that are set. Basically, what we're saying is that we're going to conserve enough water in the next 10 years so that we're using the same amount of water 10 years from now as we are today. And we're focused on reducing the unaccounted-for water down to 9%. I also want to mention, if you had a chance to read the report, there's a lot of detail. We had the consultant and staff take a look at successful programs in other cities, namely El Paso, Albuquerque, and Tucson, and what they did in order to reduce their, their consumption. And a lot of it has to do with these incentives. So there are a lot of incentives in addition to the showerheads. There's basically a dollar per square foot to take out grass. There's incentives to convert to refrigerate air from a swamp cooler. There's incentives basically for horizontal washing machines. So there's a lot of incentives that are built in this program in order to, to have the public basically react to it. It's going to require a lot of public dialogue, a lot of information to the public to make, make them aware of the new conservation goals and also the incentives that are available. But I think if it's done correctly, in 10 years, we'll be pumping the same amount of water as we are today and would have reduced our unaccounted-for water down significantly. So I just wanted to let you know, the committee was very active. Thanks to Rhonda and the consultant that put this together. And having served on it, I wanted to express my appreciation for being allowed to participate, but it is a significant departure from what we've been doing. And it's a very aggressive program to meet these goals. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Ben Como next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, on Commissioner Archuleta's point, I'm, it's my understanding that cities like El Paso and Albuquerque currently have lower rates already than the 147 that we're trying to achieve by 2030. I'm curious what, I'm curious what the barriers are there for us to achieve even lower rates than some, some bigger cities like El Paso and Albuquerque?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ben Como, thank you for the question. Um, I, I am from El Paso and grew up, abide, or in my adult life, abiding by their water conservation program. It was, had a lot of bite into it, and it started a long time ago. And I, just to say that I think that there has been some turnover in the last, you know, eight, nine years of this, of this program. So just when we got, you know, a head start of it and started, you know, actively working this program that establishes giveaways for the low-flow showerheads at outreach programs. Excuse me, the, the compliance program that monitored people that were watering and water would leave the property or pond on the property. It hasn't, it hasn't really been monitored the way that maybe El Paso and the other communities have, and for the time that they have also. But I believe that going forward, if we can reach this goal of 2030, and, and, you know, as I mentioned, these plans are written every five to seven years as a requirement, we can certainly see where we're at and population growth, which is a very big concern. Also, the, you know, the litigation that is, that is happening as well. I don't know how that will affect us in, in our water, you know, use. So I, to answer your question, we can certainly be, do better at it and, and reduce that 147 for sure.
Yeah.
Let me, Commissioner, this is Commissioner Archuleta. Having worked in El Paso and having started the Water Conservation Program there in 1990, we set 10-year goals, and then, so it's been 30 years since the Conservation Program was begun. So we started out at about 200 gallons per person per day. And as Commissioner Ben Como mentioned, today it's about 130. So it's taken 30 years to get to the 130. And so, you know, we could, we could set a much stronger goal, but I think it, you know, we, we need to start a little bit slower. But I think we'll get there, but it won't be, it won't be over the next 10 years. So I think, I think we have to realize that Albuquerque is the same way, and so is Tucson. It's taken a long time to get to where they are today. But I think the 147 is a reasonable goal, and it's not out of line with the demographics of this community. And so I think it could be done. And so for that reason, we decided not to go any lower at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Archuleta, and I certainly appreciate your expertise on this board for sure. I am, I think, you know, given Rhonda's points in terms of the litigation currently and the growth and how quickly the city is growing, certainly in District 4 in the city and Council of Sorg District, the housing boom recently, it is not slowing down. And I think as we continue to see homes with big plots of grass, and I think there are definitely stronger, some of those stronger measures that we can take that, Commissioner Archuleta, you have mentioned. And no, I'm not for, I really appreciate what you just said. I'm not necessarily advocating that we lower that goal by 2030. I was curious about why, but also just in terms of what could we be doing that's significant, that, you know, don't, I mean, asking people to reduce their grass, I think people will be upset. But I also think that it's important that there's a strong educational PR campaign about why some of these things are frankly urgent and, and important. So I just wanted to raise that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Commissioner Ben Como. I appreciate that. And, and using El Paso as one of our communities that we looked at and their incentive and rebate programs, their turf removal program was a, was a huge success. And so, like you say, you know, the grass. And, you know, the grass removal is important. We double our consumption in the summer, and that is due a lot to irrigation. We do have some communities or some areas of town that still have the evaporative coolers that is, you know, a high-water user as well. But I think this is a really good plan and the outreach and education that we can provide through our program. I've always, you know, I've always tried to go that route, you know, do the education end of it, because, you know, when you go and start policing, everybody, you know, just kind of gets mad at you and does what they want to. So we certainly will continue the outreach and education on these programs and water conservation.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Carmichael.
Commissioner Carmichael, thank you, Rhonda, and your committee, and Commissioner Archuleta for your participation in that in for establishing an aggressive set of goals. My question, I guess, is, would the plan be to roll these objectives into the total updated demand curve after the 10-year water plan is eventually finalized?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Carmichael, that is the goal, is that, the, here, here at the utility, we want the 40-year water plan, the 10-year action plan, and the water conservation plan to be talking to each other so that one plan doesn't say that we're going to have a goal of something that is in another plan that doesn't state that information. And so that's what we've tried to do. We are working with the 10-year action plan as, as the, as the LCU Board requested, you know, wanting to see what, what are our goals within the water conservation plan before we move forward on that 10-year action plan. And I think these are going to be goals that can be obtained and that certainly have more grit to them.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Hardy.
Oops. I can't hear you, sir.
I'm sorry, I was muted. From the standpoint of the overall aquifer, which is my basic concern, are we saving water overall? Admittedly, conservation is a wonderful thing, but I get the feeling, talking to some people, that people are just going out and planting more pecan trees and that all we're really doing is we're saving water and other people are using more. It would be interesting, though, is there any way to compare the amount of water that we're conserving or trying to conserve against the, any increase in the agricultural use? So we'd like to really know, are we gaining overall? Are we just saving one piece of it while someone else is using more?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hardy, wow, that's a great question. You know, I constantly get concerns about that. Um, we know that the information is basically based on the data submitted to the state that, um, I just kind of lost my train of thought. I apologize for that. Um, I think that Adrian has her hand up and could probably answer that question better than I can, sir.
That's exactly what I was going to ask for, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Whitmer, go ahead, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Adrian Whitmer, Assistant Utilities Director. You know, agricultural is, is not in our purview, and we cannot control that. We can certainly pull data from the State Engineers' Office that shows the amount of water that's being used for agriculture. Last year, they had not been able to put out the 2019 data, and I'm sure that they don't have the 2020 data yet due to the pandemic. But as soon as that's out, we'd be more than happy to provide that information to you. But other than that, it's really kind of outside of, out of our purview to, to make those comments, other than to show how much water agriculture has been using on a yearly basis.
Commissioner Hardy, yes, the thing I'd be most interested in is on the amount of agricultural pumped water, not what comes out of the dam, because it's the pumped water that's depleting the reservoir, just like our use is depleting the reservoir. And what you'd really like to know is the sum of what we're conserving and the sum of what is being pumped out, are we gaining or losing?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hardy, the information that we obtained from the State Engineers' Office is directly related to pumping, has nothing to do with the surface water that is delivered by, it would only be the pumping amount. And definitely, that could be showed to you once they provide that information out. If you would like, we can certainly show you what, what the trend has been, which typically, over 80% is that of agriculture already.
Yeah, I think just a change would be interesting. Yeah, I think just a change would be interesting. I realize your difficulty in getting the data, but it would be an interesting thing to see if overall we're gaining or losing. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, can I have a follow-up to that? Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ben Como, please.
Thank you. Adrian, thank you for that. And so, I'm curious then if ag is not under our purview. And, I mean, I think ag obviously is one of the biggest users of water. They're obviously incredibly important industry in our region. They feed us, they, you know, provide jobs for people, but no one is exempt from this responsibility, right? So, I'm curious then who's providing guidance and oversight to the ag industry when it comes to water conservation?
I can certainly answer that. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ben Como. We are required to have this water conservation program, not that Los Cruces Utilities wouldn't, but because of our water rights. And most small water systems aren't really being told that they have to have water conservation programs, which we have a couple here within our city limits. I don't want to, it's really hard for us to get into the ag conversation with you, but I do want to say that the inefficiency of flood irrigation is very inefficient. However, there is a there is a big stand on the fact that it is being leached back into the system, possibly to our water table. And that's the information that I can provide. Adrian?
Actually, this is William Little first, then I will call in Ms. Whitmer again.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Anyone who wants to can be treated to my two-hour-long sermon on the subject. Failing, we will ask Ms. Whitmer to speak.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ben Como, first of all, Chairman, I would love to listen to your two-hour conversation on that. That would be very, very interesting and probably insightful. Commissioner Ben Como, when it comes to any of the groundwater withdrawals, those are all done by permits through the Office of the State Engineer. And back in 2009, they did make the mandate that all water that's pulled out of the aquifer is metered. So, and that is when EBIDs started. Some were already metered, but more of them became, started metering after that was taken care of. Now, other communities, all of our permits, including ours and other mutual domestics, there is a provision in there that it has to be with conservation in mind. So, even the smaller systems and stuff are trying to work very hard at working at conservation. And they all continue to do that, whether they need to have a conservation plan or not. It's just part of the permit process that you need to make sure that you are attempting to conserve, because if you're just out there wasting water, you can, I guess, get in trouble by the State Engineer. But everybody is doing that, and it is the ag that's doing the pumping. That is because they have the permits with the State Engineer to pull that water out. So, they have just as much right to use their water right permits for groundwater as we do.
Interesting. Okay, thank you, Adrian. And I would also love to sit through that lecture, so maybe we'll make that work session. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you all. Any other comments on the plan? Okay, this is William Little. The plan itself has got a wealth of detail and some really important initiatives. And we all need to read that as we complete digesting all of the reports that are now going to be in front of the Board as we give guidance to the Utility Department later on this summer. I'm going to ask one more time if there's anything else for the work session.
Chairman Little, this is Rhonda Diaz. I'm sorry, sir, I just wanted to just reiterate the fact that the plan is being reviewed, you know, for, by our attorneys and the litigation attorneys for their recommendations and concerns, possibly. So, we will certainly take those into consideration and, you know, change the plan as needed and then also submit it to you, sir, to the Board, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I consider the plan to be sound, and we look forward to a presentation of the final draft. When do you anticipate that will be?
Because it's still under review, and we do want to include a community meeting for the plan. I would say a month or two. Certainly not June, July, August.
Okay, thank you. This concludes then the work session. The regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners is scheduled to begin immediately after the work session.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more item, the Strategic Business Plan, before we enter our regular meeting.
Oh, sorry, I jumped again. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Delilah Walsh, Utilities Director. We've sent you a document that's been heavily edited, and that is the update to our Strategic Business Plan. I want to preface this conversation by first saying that the changes we've made are primarily to align the plan with Elevate Los Cruces, clean up some of our results, take into consideration new issues that have arisen. But it's not a complete rewrite. As you may or may not know, the Los Cruces City Council has recently passed its, not Elevate Los Cruces, its own strat plan for the city council in order to set those goals for the city. So, we're actually going to be incorporating and in charge of implementing the strategies from the city council and then aligning it with our Strategic Business Plan. So, what I'd like to say to that is I may be coming back to you for a work session later in the calendar year to do a complete review and rewrite of our Strategic Business Plan. But we want to make sure we cleaned up what we have, we're still moving forward. And then, we really do need a work session to renew this process, because it's been almost, we're getting to that five-year mark where we need to do this again. But this is just a cleanup. So, starting with that, the first thing I want to point out is we had some format and language changes. The first is that we replaced the word ratepayers with the word customers. Ratepayers was a word recommended by the consultants who originally assisted us with the first Strategic Business Plan. It is not indicative of our attitude toward our customers. And what I mean by that is we are a service utility, we are a city-owned utility. We don't have, we're not investor-owned, we are not for-profit, we don't make money. None of us get paid extra for bonuses if the utility performed well financially. We are a complete public service-owned utility. And really, what we have are customers. We're not trying to make money off of them. We're trying to provide an efficient, reliable service at the best cost possible. And so, I didn't like the word ratepayers. We are a customer-oriented organization, and we're a Department of the City. We serve our citizens, and customers was a better word for that. Ratepayers, I could see if you were a for-profit utility, because that's what they are. They're the people who give you the money to make more money, and that's not our situation. So, that was the first big change. We also took, there are a lot of plans and critical infrastructure references within the Strategic Business Plan. That's going to be an ongoing goal, and there are plans that we've already designed. So, for example, the 40-year water plan has been completed and adopted. The 10-year water conservation plan, we're getting ready to finish that up. So, what we wanted the new plan to reflect was that we're going to continue under our defined plans. So, those are the things that you, as the Board, have approved for us, and then added the words "plans implemented." So, in other words, we've completed some of these plans. We're still working on certain placement of infrastructure, but we want it to better reflect where we are today versus where we are when we started the process. Additionally, we changed the natural gas line of the business to natural gas and energy. And this is where we'd like your input also, if you have a better name for it, because we want to be more encompassing of the new direction of our city council as well as our utility, as well as our state and federal administrations. So, energy, we've talked a lot about energy. The face of energy is changing, and that is something we need to accept, not only just accept in relation to the natural gas utility, but how will Los Cruces Utilities be a proactive member of that change and evolution in energy and resources within the city of Los Cruces? So, again, if you have any comments or issues or suggestions, we're happy to do that. This is not a plan that is set in stone. It's something we're supposed to review every year, and so, as we move forward, we welcome those opportunities. Next slide. One big change to the plan, as I mentioned, this is not a rewrite. We still have our major eight-issue statements at the start of the plan of what we're working toward and what issues we're resolving. Excuse me. We added issue number nine. Issue number nine has to address renewable energy, clean energy, decarbonization efforts, and that transition that's happening in our state and in our nation. So, we added failure to prepare for the uncertainty regarding the role of natural gas in decarbonization efforts, as well as climate action goals set by the Los Cruces City Council, coupled with opportunities for renewable and clean energy, if not addressed, could negatively impact the maintenance of our system. No matter what happens in the future as we develop our energy transition plan, we still have a responsibility to provide a safe and reliable system. If not addressed, we could reduce affordable energy options to Los Cruces residents. In other words, if there are alternatives to natural gas and more affordable options, we want to be able to respond to the needs of our customers. It could diminish energy reliability, lead to missed opportunities for renewable energy development. I know we're meeting quite a bit at the city administration level to talk about the new Community Solar Act passed by the state legislature, and that rulemaking process is starting with the PRC today. And we want to be ready for that and understand that we do have a role in this transition. It could also negatively impact the financial strength of the joint utility system. If we don't look at where we're going to be 30 years from now, that could negatively impact the strength of our whole system, of all our utilities combined. Because when we bond, we bond as a joint utility. Even though water pays off its own water debt and wastewater pays off its wastewater debt, when we bond, we do it as one unit, and so, we want to make sure we remain strong. In addition to that, we don't want to have anything happen that creates a system financially or physically that could become vulnerable to outside takeover. If the city decides we're going to eliminate natural gas, or we're going to increase natural gas, or we're going to put something else in our pipelines, we want to have the power to make those decisions and not leave us vulnerable to an outside entity, which could negatively impact our customers. I see Counselor Sore has his hand up.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Delilah. When you talked about the bonding, I don't see that in the list here, by the way. Negative strength, is that part of it?
Yes, sir.
Is it impossible you do future bonds that leave out natural gas and just bonds water and wastewater?
It is, and what we would do is ask our financial analysts to give us an idea of what the rates would be and how it would impact our bond offerings. But it absolutely is.
It will affect then the rate we would get if we left natural gas.
And I can't answer that without going through the finance, but that is something we would present to our financial analyst to ask, does this make a better bond, a stronger bond? Are we willing to pay the difference in order to leave it out? But we would definitely present you with that analysis when we come to bond issue.
Okay. I wish I could get this slide, a copy of it. Is it? It's in the packet for today, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the packet right now. I don't see it. Where is it?
We'll make sure.
It would be in the work session.
Correct.
I don't see the work session anywhere. Anyway, I'll deal with that later. I'm okay.
Okay, we'll go to the next slide. All right. So, we also edited the strategic result number four. We've kept the results as it is, but made changes to wording because we wanted to highlight the utility sustainability results in order to align those with Elevate Los Cruces, the comprehensive plan. So, we changed the wording to say, ensuring sustainable practices for a healthy community and prosperous economy are necessary for healthy growth and preservation of critical resources. And then, importance of which is evidenced by. These are already our efforts, but by outlining the strategic result this way, we have a better alignment with what Elevate Los Cruces is. I was just talking to our performance manager, Amber Vaughn, with the City Manager's Office today. And that really is a goal of all the city departments, is to make sure all our city plans, our comprehensive plans, our strategic business plans, Elevate Los Cruces, we have as much alignment and overlap as possible. So, we're all driving the ship in the same direction and not everybody pointing the rudders different ways. So, this helps us align better with Elevate Los Cruces. We're still going to have the same results of solid waste collections, green waste intake, increasing that, reducing water usage of our institutional and industrial customers, and then, of course, producing and ensuring our reclaimed water remains safe for human contact, because we want to encourage that. So, those results are still our results from the old Strategic Business Plan, but we're better aligning the strategic results with Elevate Los Cruces. Next slide. I also edited strategic result five. That one, I left the current language and then added the language before you. And what I wanted to do is emphasize affordable energy, as well as the importance of storage and mitigating for weather impact, based on what we experienced in February of 2011 and 2021. So, we added maximize its share of the natural gas and affordable energy market. It used to be in our old plan that we wanted natural gas to maximize our share of the energy market, and that's not our goal anymore. It's going to be to maximize our share of the affordable energy market also. So, if we have opportunities to be a cog in the renewable energy efforts, we want to make sure that we do maximize that opportunity for our customers. So, we want to expand infrastructure for affordable energy. And also, this was the big addition, the demand management. So, it could mean additional storage in our system in both renewable or gas, efficiency or curtailment programs, and looping our systems. So, a curtailment program would be if we ever hit a huge weather event where we start pulling back actual amount of gas sent out to residential customers or industrial users. We need to have that in our system. We need to know ahead of time, if we have a major emergency and we have to pull back some of the gas, how does that work? And we want to have a plan in place. So, in order to do that, by 2023, we will identify all system areas lacking two-way feeds and unloop lines, because the bigger our loop and the stronger our loop, the more options we have for storage and preparation, as well as having just simply a more efficient system. And by July of 2022, we have a feasibility study addressing weather events, including hazard mitigation, risk development. Including hazard mitigation, risk development, and these are the things that we don't know what we don't know yet. In other words, we need to have a feasibility study of do we over collect in cost of gas in order to prepare for weather events? Do we invest in storage infrastructure? Do we identify curtailment policies? So so this is a an edited strategic result, and then we have new results added to the business plan. And next slide. The minor changes, I removed any achieved results. And we edited those that maybe we set the bar too low for ourselves and we want to set it a little higher. So one example is the forty year water plan. We've got that done and in place, and that's where it goes back to the language we changed. Continue to implement plans. You know, continue to look at those plans and make them useful. We edited the key results. So the key results are at the front of the documents. And all they are are a repeat of results that are in the meat of the document. But they're the ones that are important, we think are important to each line of business. So for example, for the Office of the Director. My key results are no longer getting our vehicles back within four days. My key result is in developing employees and retaining them. We also added a few new results just to better reflect the needs and objectives of each line of business. So we've been through this process. We really want to make sure that we're putting our our money where our mouth is, and we need to articulate that in the strategic business plan. For the purpose statement of the Office of the Director, I added career development responsibilities. I think that is a huge. Components and need from my office that we are focusing on not only employee retention. But employee education and career development. We really want to make sure our three hundred employees are the absolute best they can be. Lastly, we remove the solid waste fleet program. I call it a minor change only because it was repeating what already exists in the fleet's strategic business plan under the Office of Budget Management. We were just repeating their. Results and then maybe changing the amount of days or the expectations, and it really wasn't doing anything for us because. Even though it's in our strategic business plan, we can't affect management or operational changes in fleet. We can work in tandem and in partnership with them, you know, as we review the budget and request improvements or changes to the fleet operations. But really, it is the Office of Management and Budget who affects that actual change in order to align with strategic business plan results. Our it is it's it's part of our money. We contribute to it, but we didn't have the full control necessary. So it was really. Ineffective to have it in our strategic business plan when we couldn't implement the strategies necessary to make those changes. So. The same results are already in somebody else's strategic business plan, and and that is their follow back. So we we just removed it from ours rather than repeating. Next slide. The major changes were that we eliminated the utilities environmental line of business. We did not eliminate the programs. So we only eliminated the line of business. Carl Clark is currently the Deputy Director for Environmental Utilities, Environmental Technical and Support and for. I think those are the two big ones. So we're we're really combining it and making it. Make more sense essentially. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Will you move back to the solid waste for a moment? Does this mean that? We're fundamentally changing. How we buy a collection equipment?
It doesn't change how we buy it at all. Because in today's world, we have to submit our equipment requests to the fleet department or the fleet program for the city of Las Cruces. They do the specs, they determine what we can purchase, we get the purchase orders, and then they make the purchases. We don't even make the purchases. We just give them the the budget to do so. So it doesn't change a single thing about what we do today. Alrighty, so on this, the big change of eliminating utilities environmental, we didn't eliminate the programs and we didn't eliminate the the results. We just took away that extra. Section essentially. So we moved water conservation under regulatory compliance. That's Carl's other one. He had he had three hats. It was regulatory compliance, technical support, and then utilities environmental. So we moved water under regulatory compliance. The solid waste, green waste, compost, and recycling, we move that under solid waste because that's who manages the program. So it's odd to have. A program under Carl when it was Robin and her people who managed that program. And then Griggs Walnut, we moved to the Office of the Director. And again. It's primarily Adrian that takes care of Griggs Griggs Walnut and Dominique under the Director's Office. And so it just made more sense to have them there. So the program still exists. It just doesn't have the line of business anymore. We also combine the business services, customer engagement, and revenue and financial reporting lines of business. Joe Provencio is the Deputy Director for all three lines of business. So again, it just makes more sense to combine everything under one Deputy Director. And we didn't have to move any programs. We just put everything under Joe the way it is in real life. We also combine natural gas corrosion with construction maintenance in natural gas to create the natural gas and energy construction maintenance and corrosion. And this was a more efficient use of the crews responsible for those for construction and maintenance as well as corrosion. Based on the licenses. It was also a recommendation in the merger Mercer report, actually, that these should all be together in order to use those crews for all functions. And so this is just a better use. Of our crew and and our resources. And Commissioner Sorg.
Yes, thank you. What is actual gas corrosion?
That is actually corrosion prevention. And so water gets in pipes and they're all made of metal, and we actually, we monitor for corrosion at all times. And. Actually, Lucille, I'll have you explain that. It's incredibly interesting. I'd rather hear from the expert.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioner, Lucy Garcia. I'm sorry, Dr. Ramin, Commissioner Sorg, please.
Well, in other words, this involves the replacement of corroded pipes with new pipes, maybe?
It possibly could. What the department does or what the section does for corrosion. Is they actually place annodes and cap annodes out there on the system. So they use them as a sacrificial metal. And they check the voltage on on the all steel lines that we have. So based on a voltage that we have, we can tell if there's corrosion going to develop. They also protect the pipe because the corrosion could be internal or external. And we have test stations throughout all our steel pipe, and they monitor those voltages. To see what the condition of the pipe is. For example, we've had a. You know, up on Telschore, we had a contractor that drove a ground rock when they put electrical service in. And it's it skimmed our metal service that went in there, and all of a sudden the voltage went up. So that's a good spot for corrosion to start occurring. And so they track that down just on the routine checks. And we're able to identify that, pull it back, because we need to stay at a certain voltage, mill volts, to ensure that our systems stay sound. Because if you remember metal, you know, it wants to come back to its normal state. We we as humans turn it into metal and it and spend its whole life trying to get back to the Ferris iron. So our our group is what monitors that and then replaces that, and they also check the coating on it. All steel pipes are coated. So in a nutshell, that's what the corrosion group does is they prevent corrosion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And next slide, please. Looking forward, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I would really like to meet later in the year as a work session with either. A consultant, the city's consult, the city's new consultant, or even with our own. We've been working with Dr. Frank Ryanow out of New Mexico Tech on our own. Leadership and management within the utility. So I really would like to root the board and and pick apart. The strategic business plan more than we're doing today. Today, we're editing and updating and combining and having things make more sense on the general ledger and financial side. But I really like that opportunity to meet with the board. And and have a good discussion because we're one, we're going to be updating. We are going to be updating our master plan for the utility. Two, we have a new energy transition objective. Within the gas utility. And three, with the passage of the city's comprehensive plan as well as the city's strategic plan. We want to better align ourselves as a department of the whole organization. And so I I think that's a discussion I'd like to have later. In addition to that discussion, the things I'd like to see happen as director is, first of all. At the back of your plan, we have some italicized three summary sheets. That are showing for three new programs. The first being a management of information systems program that would exist under the Office of the Director. The reason I want this is because the utility as a whole, we have very different software demands and sophomore need software needs than the rest of the city. Examples of that are Utility Hawk, our AMI system, SCADA systems, RouteWare, even. The way we do work orders and our regulatory reporting. We have much different demands than the city of Las Cruces as an organizations, just as they would in like PD and fire. They're very specialized organizations. The reason we would need a management of information systems is one, we are becoming more software dependent. As a utility, we saw that with upgrades. It it does help with efficiency. That that's the bottom line. Technology is improving efficiencies. But because the city of Las Cruces Information Technology Department is only concerned with the city as a whole. That means they only support. Work to our servers and our MUNIS systems and shared software like Microsoft Suite. That's all IT is going to work about work with. When we have specialized software that only exists for the city of Las Cruces, we're responsible for our own support. IT does not support that for us. We have to work directly with the vendor to debug problems. We have to work with any issues regarding our software. We can't just say call IT. That's not how it works because it's only existent within the utility. And we have to manage that, and it's becoming. It's it's becoming quite burdensome for us to do so, and and we need we need more support on the technology area. In addition to that, we have a tremendous amount of data. When it comes to GIS data, to work order data, to inventory data, to systems data, to. Even usage data on the AMI systems and SCADA. We're falling behind in our data management, and I can say that with certainty. Even GIS, I think we're collecting something like three thousand data points a month. In GIS, because when we go out, we mark new we mark new lines, we mark new construction, we're putting in new valves. And we cannot keep up with the amount of data that we're bringing in in order to make the data useful. And so that's that's something I envision. Well, I think we need it today, so I'd like to see it coming in our next iteration. The other one is a sustainable energy developments program, and that would fall under the natural gas and energy. Line of business. And this is where we can focus on the renewables and sustainable energy and what our utility. Just as we have a water conservation program within the utility, we would have a sustainable energy program in the utility. I we really need to, we have a sustainability officer for the city of Las Cruces. But she's responsible for the entire city of Las Cruces. We want to have a program that can partner with our sustainability office. And in tandem, reach the goals not only of the city, but meet the needs and the goals of the utility. Another program, possible program would be our natural gas regulatory compliance training and inspections. This is something we need to develop over time. The functions of regulatory compliance, training, and inspections we're performing today. But the regulatory demand on the utility is growing every day. And I don't anticipate that stopping, even with legislative. Bills that were introduced during this twenty twenty one legislative session. A lot were focused on new regulations through NMED or giving more powers and more budget in order to increase the regulatory requirements. To local utilities and and users, whether there was legislation regarding water, legislation regarding wastewater, legislation regarding solid waste. Nothing went through this year, but we're seeing that demand in a regulatory environment growing each day. And so this is something that. Right now, it exists as functions within the natural gas department, but. I do envision that growing more and more each year.
Okay.
And. I I believe that that's it. That's it in a nutshell. Again, I just want to emphasize, I do want to come back and meet with y'all. Later in the calendar year for a work session. And once we have a consultant in place, we can do that because we we really need to sit down and and have that hash out the hard. The hard questions because we are going to be working with a consultant moving forward on the energy transition plan.
Okay, thank you. Now am I done?
Yes, sir. So just for next steps, we will be sending this to the city manager. And then, once he approves and it's finalized at the performance end with the city administration, we'll bring back a clean copy to you for your final approval.
Okay, well, thank you. And with that, I will conclude the work session. And we will switch over to the regular board meeting. Which is scheduled to occur immediately following the work session. Give me about three minutes to gather myself.
Bill, should we leave this meeting or just stay here?
Please just stay. This is Alma Ruiz. Please do not log off. This is the same link that will be used for the regular meeting.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm I'm just asking for a little forbearance here. Hold your fire. Call the regular meeting of the Board of Commissions to order. The first order of business is to inquire of. The. Board and of staff if there are any conflicts of interest, any item on the agenda today.
None. None.
And none for staff.
Okay, and the chair none. Thank you. The next order of business is acceptance of the agenda. You have a motion to approve.
Commissioner Archuleta, so moved.
Thank you. And a second.
Commissioner Hardy, second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, ready for a vote. Vice Chair Archuleta.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Como. Commissioner Ben Como, you're probably muted.
I don't think she's there.
Okay, skipping. Commissioner Carmichael.
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson. Okay, skipping Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Sorg.
Yes.
Back to Commissioner Ben Como.
Yes, here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Johnson. Silent. Okay.
Okay, I I got the button right, finally.
Thank you. All right, the agenda is approved. The chair, yes. The next item of business is the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Delilah Walsh, Utilities Director, for the record. I will warn you that our administrative report is abbreviated this month due to the fact that we did have a longer work session as well as an executive session prior to this meeting. And we will be giving shorter updates for the admin report. Let's go to the first slide, please. On this, on this one, we'll just be going over a very short presentation on COVID, our HR report. We have some discussion on the Arctic Storm reporting out for the public and then our board resolutions. Next slide. For COVID nineteen, our new return to work plan is effect in effect under the directives of the city manager for staff to return to at least three days per week. Sorry, I left off a T there. I do want to inform you, Donna Anna County today is designated as turquoise as of April thirtieth. And the state of New Mexico pursuant to the government governor's goals should be fully opened by the end of June, first of July. And based on the vaccination numbers that we're seeing being reported through the state of New Mexico, it looks like we're on target. To meet those goals by the end of June. New Mexicans over sixteen are eligible for the vaccine. We continue to follow all NMED OSHA regulations regarding COVID positive cases as well as exposure. I am continuing sanitization of all common areas, offices, and equipment. We'll likely do that well through. Will likely do that well through December, simply because now, I don't know if you've read, but now we've got a norovirus outbreak, which is a stomach flu in the state of New Mexico, so we're just going to continue with sanitization efforts to keep our employees healthy. We did receive an additional $50,000 for the utility assistance funds. As Joe Provencio mentioned to you at the last meeting, we had exhausted all utility assistant funds and we're at a zero balance. However, the city council did award an additional $50,000 to finish out the fiscal year to assist both commercial and residential customers. However, on July, on July 1st, when we roll over to the new fiscal year, we will return to our original utility assistance plan. And that means we will only be assisting residential customers. So we are doing outreach to our commercial customers, making sure that they worked with us or with Donna Anna County's assistance funds to get them covered through the end of June. But we will return to our normal operations or pre-COVID operations and fund program guidelines after January, I'm sorry, July 1st. Next slide. On the HR side, I'm very excited to announce that Adrian Whitmer has been selected at our, as our newest assistant director. So Adrian, I'll let you, if you want to say a few words?
Sure, thank you. Hi all, Adrian Whitmer, Assistant Utilities Director. Just wanted to let you know that I'm very honored and excited to obtain this new position and I really look forward to continuing my work with Delilah and her vision for the department in any capacity and the lines of business and for the city of Las Cruces. I've really enjoyed my employment. I love the city of Las Cruces and utilities. And I'm, I'm really, really excited about this. Thank you.
This is William Little. We are very pleased. Congratulations.
Thank you all much.
I, I, I was teasing Adrian before because you do have two women in charge of the utility now, which is not an industry standard. So it says a lot about the attitude of our city as well as the opportunities available through the utility and this organization. So it's an excellent reflection of that. Last month I shared with you that our staffing specialist, Diamond Medina, was selected and is now working with us. I just wanted to remind, she's doing a great job, so we're going to repeat it again this month. She's completed her training with human resources and we're seeing a really great communication and turnaround because of her, so thank you very much, Diamond. We do have a new graduating intern, Cameron Zaldivar, and we'll be bringing him to a subsequent meeting. This was sort of a long one and, and Cameron is fixing to graduate tomorrow or, or on Saturday, so he's our newest internship graduate. We'll be transitioning him to a regular employee, so I'm, I'm looking forward to introducing him to you at a subsequent board meeting. I will also let you know our vacancies are currently at 55. However, as I mentioned, I think next month, we're going to see a much better number. We've got quite a bit of work going on between HR and Diamond and our hiring, hiring people. Um, next slide. All right, I'm going to turn this over for Arctic Storm reporting.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. Mario Puentes, Gas Business Analyst. So at last month's board meeting, the board expressed an interest to learn or to hear about some of the mechanics of how we purchase gas. So before we go there, let's first talk about who we buy gas from. So we buy it from Shell Energy North America, from the Public Energy Authority of Kentucky, and from the New Mexico Municipal Acquisition Authority. The percentages there at the end of each bullet refers to each supplier's contribution to meet the city's average daily supply, supply requirements. If we put this in chart form, next slide, please. It looks something like this. This profile is fairly, fairly typical or common of, you know, local distribution companies that have a predominantly temperature sensitive load. And so this, the, this is, like I said, this is the average daily supply requirements by month. And, and it represents the period of 2016 to, through 2020. I also wanted to point out the NMEA and the peak contributions to, to be, that meets that average demand. And also note that when we structured those contracts or when we structured how much gas we would buy from those entities, we designed them to mirror the, the profile of, of our system, you know, that is fairly seasonal and follows a, follows a predictable pattern. And then the other thing I want to mention about NMEA and peak is that when we entered into those contracts, the city agreed that it would buy specific quantities by month. And in the Mia's case, for the entire term of the agreement, which was 30 years, then that was back in 2009. And then the P contract, we also agreed to buy a specific quantity every day, but that one does have an escalation factor. So every time that we reset that contract, maybe five, every five or six years, it'll be escalated by about 6%. Next slide, please. So very similar slide here, except for the, now you see the jagged lines and that represents calendar year 2020 of the metered gas coming into the city gate off of the El Paso Natural Gas Pipeline System. And again, you see that NMEA and peak, you know, meet part of that load and then the remainder is filled in by Shell. Next slide, please. Okay, so the basic mechanics of purchasing. So back in 2019, staff brought a resolution to the board, asking the board to consider and to approve renewing the business relationship we have with Shell. And the board did so. And there were two, two documents that were executed as a result of that approval. One was the services agreement, which pretty much, the, the, the big item on that agreement is that Shell agrees to schedule all of the city's gas onto the El Paso Natural Gas Pipeline System for delivery to Las Cruces. That includes the NMEA and the peak gas. The other document was the transaction confirmation. So this one here is the one that really kind of covers, you know, transactional terms. It defines the different types of gas quantities and when they must be ordered. And it also defines the pricing methodologies. So the different quantities are, you have your base load designated quantity, you, quantity. You have your incremental daily quantity and then you have your third party quantity. Third parties refers to the, in our case, to the peak and the NMEA, NMEA gas. So what staff does at the, at the, around the last week of every month, after some careful study of, of historical consumption patterns for the coming month, you know, we'll come up with how much gas we think we will need in the coming months. So for example, on May 24th, we will submit our order for June to Shell. And, and we also will indicate to Shell whether we want to buy that gas from, from the Permian Basin or the San Juan Basin. And that is mostly driven by the current daily prices, because that will have an impact on what, where we think the monthly price will land. So that is, that is how the gases order. We'll send a letter to Shell every month saying, okay, for the night, you know, for the month that comes, that's coming up. You know, this is what we are agreeing to buy every single day from, from you, you know, so which is what we need less than NMEA and peak. And the way the gas is priced, the default pricing method is that the base load is priced at the monthly index for the applicable month. And again, it'll be either San Juan or Permian, depending on how we ask Shell, you know, what, what, where we direct Shell to buy, to sell us the gas from. And then the, oh, so I did not describe incremental daily quantity. So the incremental daily quantity are those quantities that we made, as the month rolls out, we may need additional gas or we may need to sell back some gas if, if for some reason, something has happened that we are not needing so much gas. And that gas is priced on a daily index. And again, also out of the San Juan or Permian Basin, depending on what we're trying to achieve. And then the third party gas, which is peak and NMEA, those specific, the, those entities contracts specify that it will be priced at the San Juan monthly index for the applicable month minus the, the discounts that we agree to. So currently, NMEA is like a 28, I believe it's 28.9 cents discount and then peak has a 20 cent discount from the monthly index. Next slide, please. So this chart, again, it depicts February 2021. So I just wanted to illustrate that, you know, when we, at the last week of January, when we determined how much we thought we were going to need for February on a daily basis, you, that number is depicted there on the horizontal black line, you know, which is about 14,000. Well, it's not about, it's exactly 14,450 decathermes. And you can see that NMEA is contributing a, a, a portion of that peaked, contributes the other portion to meet that load and then Shell fills in the rest. So we were buying about 10,500 decathermes from Shell every day for that period. And we were good up until the 13th and then, you know, we had the storm and, you know, a lot of the dust up that happened there, but then as soon as the storm passed, then you can see how our consumption kind of fell right in line with our base load. So it's a fairly straightforward process because the, the contracts are well-written and, you know, the board has reviewed them and so it's, it's just a matter of monitoring the system. And this is, this picture here is fairly typical of any winter month, you know, where you'll see some evenness and then you'll see a coal front coming in and so that's about it, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll stand for questions.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ed Archuleta. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, you mentioned that on a certain date before the next month, you sent in a letter requesting to purchase so much gas, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
In January, in January, when you sent this, can, can you, can you sell back the gas at the same price you paid or not? If you order, over order?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Archuleta, no. So, so say we ordered the gas for February and at that, at that point, we don't know what the price is. So as, as February rolls out, then that order is priced at a monthly, at the monthly index price for February.
Right.
And then if you, if you need to sell back some gas, then that'll be priced at, at a daily index price. So that index price could be higher or lower than the, than the monthly price. So we aim to kind of be right on the money.
Right.
You know, so that if we do, if we do need to sell back some gas, we don't, you know, we don't want to overshoot it because yeah, that, that situation can happen that
Right.
as the prices start, you know, it, it, they could go either way, so.
It'd be a gamble, right?
Yes, sir. And that's, that's not something that I'm trying to, yeah, that would be like more into the speculation and.
Right, yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Director Walsh?
Yes, thank you, Delilah Walsh, for the record. I, and I want to emphasize it, it's interesting and I know I, I, it's part of being public, in public service and we hear some criticism, like you should have planned for February, you should have done this, you should have done that. Number one, the February incident has not ever happened in, in our country. And that's why there are well over scores of lawsuits being filed within the energy industry regarding natural gas. But number two, we also have to remember that for two months in 2019, our cost of gas was zero because we were able to purchase gas and sell back at a good price. April of last year, our cost of gas was 45 cents a decotherm, so. So it is a fluctuating market and we are doing what we can by understanding our base loads. Mario is constantly analyzing usage over trends. I, I can attest firsthand that he's the first one to tell us when weather is coming in because he bases his purchases for those daily purchases to try to get the best price ahead of that weather. We had no idea the Permian Basin was going to freeze and shut down. You know, that, that's not something you can predict and hopefully our regulators at the national level are, are going to address that later on down the road. But it's, it's an interesting system and an interesting process. But the bottom line is the utility makes no money and no benefit off the cost of gas. Everything we do is to make sure we get as low a price as possible for our end user customers. And so that's why we've had months where gas is, actually, if you look at your gas bill from 2019, check out the summer, your cost of gas is $0. We were able to sell back enough to cover our own expenses on that, on that month, in those two months, so. I, I just want to emphasize how much effort and, and time we have going in to analyze this consistently and constantly to make sure we are getting those best prices.
This is Commissioner Archuleta, just to correct you, this did happen 10 years ago. We did have a freeze 10 years ago. So it's happened before and given climate change, it's probably going to happen again sooner than later. But I know it's hard to plan for it, but I just want to let you know that it happened 10 years ago as well.
The weather events, absolutely, those will happen. What was weird about this time is the market event tied to the weather event. And that's what the anomaly was, the fact that we had this outrageous market pricing where the gas prices went up hun, a hundredfold versus just a weather event. Because this happened in 2011, it only cost us, not only, but it cost us about $350,000. This time it's 13 million because of the market.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that is the, the whole of our administrative report. And if you don't have any other questions, we're ready to move on to resolutions.
Okay, thank you. All right. The first resolution is a resolution approving a price agreement for natural gas and diesel engine repair and maintenance to Southwest Commercial Engines, Inc. of El Paso, Texas. The amount not to exceed $150,000 per year, for one year, with the option of three additional one-year renewals, subject to approved budget appropriations and annual renewal for the wastewater and water lines of business. A motion to approve. I'm sorry, you were on top of each other. Commissioner Sword moves to approve? Commissioner Sword, you're, you're muted.
Said I can, but I will yield if somebody else wants to.
That's all right. And a second?
Johnson, second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is John Marosik, Deputy Director, Wastewater. The Resolution 2021-105 before you is for repair and maintenance of natural gas and diesel engines for the water and wastewater lines of business. These engines power emergency generators and the aeration blowers at Jacob Pan's wastewater treatment facility. This agreement is for the amount not to exceed $150,000 per year, for one year, with the option for three more years. I happy, happy to answer your questions.
Questions? Hearing none. Ready for a vote? Vice Chair Archuleta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Como?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sword?
Yes.
And the chair, yes. Thank you. The next resolution is a resolution a resolution approving amendment number one to resolution number twenty dash twenty one dash LCU zero zero four. Funding for professional legal services under the existing assigned contract approved under resolution number twenty twenty one LCU zero one eight with McCarter and English LOP specializing in the energy and natural gas industry. Adding fifty five thousand dollars to the purchase order for a new estimated amount up to eighty thousand dollars for the remainder of fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Motion to approve.
No move.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson approved, Commissioner Sword. Thank you. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mario Puentes, Gas Business Analyst. So yes, the purpose of this resolution is to increase the purchase order to fund the professional legal services related to the McCarter and English law firm, which specializes in energy and natural gas industry. In the natural gas and, in the energy and natural gas industry from twenty five thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars. Year to date, we have spent just close to twenty one thousand dollars and that includes billings through March of twenty twenty one. Uh, we have significantly increased the use of the firm services since mid-February due to that storm Yuri and the effect that it had on natural gas supply and prices and consequently to the disagreements that we have had with the city's transmission provider and, and major natural gas supplier. Next slide, please. So the firm has provided city guidance in addressing the El Paso Natural Gas Company's penalties. It assisted in drafting the request that we submitted to EPNG for penalty waivers. And it also wrote up the protest for short paying the EPNG invoice. Mr. Greg, which is the principal attorney, wrote up, wrote the city's affidavit that accompanied the protest. So with staff, you know, giving him, providing the information as to what we did before and during, during the storm. You know, he wrote it in a, in a form that he thought was more appropriate for, for the case. That affidavit will likely end up at the FERC if we go down that path. They have also, you know, the company has also provided guidance in addressing gas supplier matters. It got, it provided guidance to have us focus on the disputable points of the supplier's natural gas invoice and it wrote up the protest that accompanied the short payment to the supplier. Next slide, please. So what comes next is, you know, difficult or impossible to predict. The supplier has pushed back on the city's protest for short paying the invoice. And a couple of days ago, El Paso Natural Gas filed with the commission a limited waiver of its tariff, you know, to eliminate collection of interest through the end of calendar year twenty twenty one. But it also indicated that it will not seek waiver of the operational flow penalties. So with this resolution, city staff is acting conservatively to, in its request to increase funding. You know, our goal is to be, to be prepared to defend the city's and LCU's position and and have the authority and ability to, to pay legal counsel for it. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sword, go ahead.
Now, could you give me, could stop give me a little bit of description of this firm called McCarter and where they're from and any history? Because this is an important, really important case.
Mr. Chairman, Mario Puentes, Gas Business Analyst. The firm, I believe, is headquartered in New York City. The city has historically, and I would go back maybe thirty years, that it used Miller, Bayless and O'Neal. And John Gregg is the principal, has, has been the principal attorney on the city's account since that time, you know, back in the late eighties, I believe, or thirty years or so. McCarter and English acquired Miller, Bayless and O'Neal in twenty fourteen. And so as the, the board then accepted the assignment of the Miller, Bayless and O'Neal legal contract to McCarter and English. So Mr. Gregg, who, again, the principal attorney has represented the city on both individual matters regarding, you know, back, going back to the Mercado natural gas contract, they, he, he has worked with us on negotiating the Shell agreements on he's the one that helped us a lot on the, on EPNG matters regarding the restructuring of its agreements and whatnot. As far as I know about McCarter as a whole, I think they have somewhere around four hundred attorneys. And, and in the conversations that we would, that we have had with Mr. Gregg, I think, I think any kind of, if, if it went down to litigation, I believe that it would have to we would have to defer to maybe some advice or recommendations as to who would handle that. Mr. Gregg is not a litigator. But I, I can, I can tell you, Mr. Chair, I'll just add this last point to it. I can tell you that in the last twenty five years, the city has probably avoided in excess of fifteen to twenty million dollars in natural gas costs because of the, some of the work that, that they have done.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. That, I appreciate all that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sword, if I could add to that, in our discussions with John as a group, not just with the city of Las Cruces, but also the city of Mesa and other users that are facing the same situation. They actually have litigators within McCarter and English that this is their specialty is to litigate energy lawsuits. So, so it is an option for us should we ever have to move forward and in a litigation scenario.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Other questions? Hearing none. Ready for a vote? Vice Chair Archuleta.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Como.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael.
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sword.
Yes.
And the chair, yes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next resolution is Resolution LCU Board Resolution twenty twenty one, LCU zero zero four A. A resolution recommending to the city council that significant modifications. I'm sorry, I'm reading the top and I should be reading the bottom. We'll start over. LCU Board Resolution twenty twenty one, LCU zero three one. A resolution recommending to the city council that significant modifications be made to the municipal code, chapter twenty five, solid waste. A motion to approve.
Commissioner Hardy, motion to approve.
Thank you. And a second.
Commissioner Johnson, second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Good afternoon, Chairman Commissioners, Robin Lawrence, Deputy Director for Solid Waste. This resolution is a recommendation to the city council to update chapter twenty five of the municipal code dealing with solid waste. The majority of chapter twenty five of the city's municipal code has not been updated since nineteen eighty eight. And it still talks about manually transported containers, you know, the metal ones that you have to carry to the curb and the drivers have to get off the truck to empty. We don't do that anymore. There's a lot of terminology that we use that had not previously been defined or it needed further clarification. For example, illegal dumping, filthy trash. Additionally, a lot of the responsibilities related to the rules of collection, management and disposal has been updated to fall under the direction of the utilities director. And we have some clarification on garbage rules, you know, the placement of the containers, who's responsible for keeping containers clean, accessibility of containers and information related to dumpster enclosures on commercial properties. We currently have a process by a prior resolution that requires city manager approval on a yearly basis for a third party to collect construction and demolition debris within city limits. As well as agreements with South Central Solid Waste as it relates to recycling. So I've included these items in this chapter, the municipal code, as well as an addition related to food waste collection for composting purposes, which also aligns with Elevate Las Cruces goals. So there are a lot of changes and updates. But again, the current version is over thirty years old and a lot has changed with trash collection in those thirty years. Next steps upon board approval would be to take this a resolution to city council to approve and adopt the, the modifications to this chapter of the municipal code. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? This is William Little. I have one.
Okay.
Of all the changes that you're proposing in your judgment, are any of them likely to be controversial?
I don't believe so. And I have been working on this for a couple of years and have had legal review and codes has reviewed it. Utility staff, South Central Solid Waste. So I've had a lot of feedback and collaboration on this document. So I, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I had, had just one thing that I, I kind of struggled with. And by the way, this is very, very thorough. And I can see why it took two years to put it all together, but, and I really appreciate it. But in section twenty five point nine about avoiding solid waste fees and regulations, there's one sentence that says, customers receiving residential solid waste services shall not place out for collection any solid waste or recyclable material that originated from a business establishment. And after reading that, that two or three times, I decided it meant that I can't recycle Amazon's cardboard box that they shipped something to me because that's where it originated. Or if I has leftovers from the post on the takeout that I had, that I can't recycle or, or put that into the solid waste. And maybe I'm reading this a little too strictly. I'm not sure, but it, it bothered me.
Okay, so Chairman Commissioner Johnson, what that means is if, if I have a business that maybe in the county or someplace else I have a business and I'm not, I don't have solid waste service, I can't take my trash from that business and go and place it in my, in my trash container at home to avoid paying fees for my commercial business.
Yeah, and, and I think that's not, not an unreasonable interpretation, but it just I couldn't figure a better way to write it that would allow you to throw away the box from Amazon and not violate the ordinance.
Well, that's not what it means.
Um, I can look at that and reword it if you would like and, and you know, present it again or you know, what, what would the board like me to do?
Well, I certainly don't want you to make it a two and a half year project to answer that one little question. And, and maybe I'm over stressing on, on this, but it, it just, it created a logical inconsistency to me. But it may be just simply understanding anytime you buy something, it's now yours. It's not the person you bought it from and you're not disposing of their recyclable materials, you're disposing of yours because you bought it.
Correct.
Commissioner Johnson, does that satisfy you?
Yes.
Okay, Director Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Delilah Walsh for the record. I just want to, and this is just me emphasizing the food waste for composting. As Robin mentioned, it aligns with the city's comprehensive plan in Elevate Las Cruces. But it is kind of an exciting concept and it's something our sustainability officer had brought up also as part of our efforts toward a circular economy where we can use that food waste somewhere else. And and we, we don't have the resources to process it. And it's not a business we want to get into. It's very technical and and you have other regulations. But the fact that we'll be able to open this opportunity up to outside vendors to provide this service to restaurants and support the possibility of the, the circular economies, it's just very exciting. And I, I simply wanted to comment on that.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none. Ready for a vote? Vice Chair Archuleta.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Como.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael.
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sword.
Yes.
And the chair, yes. Thank you all. Next one is LCU Board Resolution twenty twenty one, LCU zero three two. A resolution authorizing Las Cruces utility staff to make revisions to the Las Cruces Utilities billing and service regulations, customer central fees and charges scheduled to update the meter testing fee. Motion to approve.
Commissioner Hardy, motion to approve.
Thank you. And a second.
Second.
Commissioner Ben Como, second. Discussion.
Chairman Commissioners, Jose Provencio, Deputy Director of Business Services. Before you, for your approval, Resolution number twenty dash twenty one dash LCU zero three two is updating the meter testing fees for, for the new technology and the meter technology in place at the conclusion of the conversion to the AMI AMI system that began, began about a year and a half, two years ago. As we've come to, come to working with the technology in the field, it is, the, the devices that we have, notably the cam strip meters and, and other, the other larger meters, they're extremely accurate and very reliable. However, there are some requests to check the accuracy of our meters and that understanding that what we are working and operating with is highly accurate metering. Regardless, we had to update, we updated the, the, the meter testing fees based on the costs and the, the amount of time and effort required to pull them out of the field, test them and then reset them back for, for further use. With that, we updated all, not just the water, but we updated the meter test, test fees for gas meters also. With that, I will stand by for any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions?
Commissioner Archuleta.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this doesn't, this doesn't have to do with the testing fee, but and looking at the, the entire administrative regulations, I was looking at the water conservation administrative fees. And I, and since we're going to be adopting a new water conservation plan, the fees that are set there are very low. The first, the first violation, there's no charge. Second violation is twenty dollars. And it goes all the way to a fifth violation of fifty dollars. So these fees are very low. They're not going to get anybody's attention. So if somebody's violating the water conservation ordinance, these fees are not going to get anybody too excited. So I would ask that these fees be looked at. And maybe when the water conservation program is brought to us for final approval, that this particular section be looked at and ask the staff to make any recommendations on increasing these fees. that this particular section be looked at and ask the staff to make any recommendations on increasing these fees.
Chairman, Commissioner Archuleta noted, we will certainly update those penalties, penalty charges as, as the conservation plan nears its completion. We certainly will coordinate all the efforts with the water conservation coordinator and all individuals involved with the effort of the water plan.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ben Como.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, just on that point, I think I just want to respectfully disagree. I don't necessarily think that higher higher punitive measures will work either particularly in our community, but I would. But just on that point, I do think it's important that we discuss, you know, what some of those educational, you know, measures can look like before we get to an incredibly punitive place with our customers, given that a big piece of this is educational and a cultural shift.
This is the chair. We'll take up that topic at a more opportune time. Now we just want to talk about meter testing fees. Any more comments or questions? Ready for a vote? Vice Chair Archuleta.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Como.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael.
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sorg.
Yes.
And the chair, yes. Thank you all. One more. LCU Board Resolution twenty twenty-one LCU zero thirty-three. A resolution implementing an emergency my goodness, that echo is back. An emergency commodity recovery surcharge rider. Motion to approve. I need a second.
Commissioner Hardy, second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Chairman Commissioners, Jose Provencio, Deputy Director, Business Services. Before you for your resolution, before you for approval is resolution twenty dash twenty-one dash LCU zero-three-three. Resolution here seeks the approval of implementation of the emergency commodity recovery surcharge only entirely associated with the winter storm Yuri that impacted gas supplies and gas pricing in February. The surcharge initiates the recovery and will continue and will continue being monitored and reported upon and reported and reconciled as other efforts in terms of protesting and protesting charges between the pipeline transporter and the supplier continue and hopefully resolved. One thing that must be kept in mind, this is a recovery period, the planning horizon is a thirty month recovery period. And the entire process is recovering the cost of the commodity. This is a straight pass through to the customer. There's nothing that's gained by the utility and in terms of the cost of the commodity. And we will monitor the situation and keep the board updated. I'll stand by for any questions you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I can't remember having read this more than sleep, one to sleep time away. Does it give us the right to terminate the collection when we've reached the amount of money we need? Or are we going to have to amend it to terminate it if we're successful? Legal processes is going to.
Joe, you're muted.
Okay, it keeps turning itself on. I'm sorry. Chairman Commissioner Johnson, in the event that we we encounter optimistic and opportune scenarios, even though it's set for a thirty month recovery period, if things are beneficial and turn out in our favor, this will be terminated immediately so as not to, and to prevent from any over collection of any revenue that's associated with this surcharge.
Yeah, I understand. That's what we plan to do, but is it in the resolution that it requires us to stop? I think it should be.
If I can just refer to a previous, a similar situation that we have on the water side in terms of litigation, recovery rate rider. We establish what is required to recover the incremental increase in litigation. Staff monitors this periodically. We can, and as the process approaches of total recovery, it is simply terminated and with a follow-up notification to the board when that occurs.
Okay.
So, Joe, for the record, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Delilah Walsh for the record, essentially pursuant to your resolution for this, this charge, it will go away automatically. And then, as Joe mentioned, we would simply update the board.
Other questions? Okay, this is William Little. So this rider is following common practice that it stops automatically when it's no longer needed. Ready for a vote? Vice Chair Archuleta.
Sorry, aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Ben Como.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael.
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sorg.
Yes.
And the chair, yes. Thank you all. That concludes the discussion of all resolutions. The next order of business is old business. Commissioner Carmichael, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, before you proceed, do we need to go back and include public participation offer? Or did I miss that?
I missed it. Thank you for watching out for me. Back to the beginning of the agenda. Did we receive any requests for public comment? None. Do we have any members of the public listening in who care to comment? Seeing none, I repaired the damage. Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. Now on to old business.
But, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Commissioner Sorg.
I don't know if any of the attendees are able to speak in the meeting. Are they, are they Almar or Delilah?
I'll have to refer to staff. I believe they can't, they do submit ahead of time and let us know. But I know we didn't receive anything for this meeting, but during the meeting, I, I think you can still raise your hand and be acknowledged.
No, during the meeting, you still have the opportunity to send an email and someone would receive that. So, Commissioner Sorg, there's no opportunity for a attendee to speak. It would all be by email.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Anything else? Old business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the records, Lila Walsh, Utilities Director. Under old business, just a reminder, for June, we will have another work session. At that work session, we will discuss resolution twenty-one one thirty-five, which is the council's directive for an energy transition plan. That's my summary of the resolution, essentially. What we'll be doing is just coming to you, asking you for your feedback, discussing what the city council has set forth for us under that resolution, as well as the climate action plan. A little bit about Elevate Los Cruces and the city's comprehensive plan and strategic business plan. So we'll just be talking about those plans and getting direction from the board on how to move forward in this process. And really looking at the utility and planning for the next few decades. Also at that work session, we'll be talking about the ten-year water action plan. And Adrian, I don't know if you have anything to add about that update on the ten-year water action plan for old business?
Thank you, Commissioners Chair Adrian Whitmer, Assistant Utility Director. So right now with the ten-year action plan, they have turned in and I have finalized some comments to them late ASR white paper. So there were just very minor comments that they'll be making, which then I'll be able to provide that to you. Right now, they are working on the summary and comparison of the water supply alternatives along with the requested present value analysis. So that is currently underway and they're hoping to have something in shortly. Then they're also working then on the final item that you all had requested, and then they're working on the direct reuse option. So we can certainly update you next go around for next, I guess, during the work session. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardy.
Yes, I was wondering when we might go back to regular meetings and get off Zoom. I hear words out of Santa Fe that maybe things will be normal by the end of June. Has anyone heard anything about that?
Well, that will be under new business.
Okay. I'll hold off until then.
Okay, any other old business?
Yes, sir. I'll keep Adrian on to discuss the sewer ordinance update.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, Adrian Whitmer, Assistant Utilities Director. Also on May third, city council approved the change to the ordinance based on the utility board's recommendation to make the mandatory sewer connection, as you all recommended. So seeing as how that has been approved, as new development comes in or there's rehab where a sewer line isn't stalled, there will be the mandatory connection within a year. So just to let you know, then on top of that, we are working with the housing group to make sure that anybody that's affected that's low to low to moderate income, that they will be able to work with them to make sure that there's funding so that they can afford to actually hook in. I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Comments or questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, that's it for old business. We can move on to new business.
Please.
Robin is going to just give you a brief update on our routeware contract. In the past, we used to come to the board if we approved a four-year contract, one-year contract with three one-year extensions, we would bring each extension to the board. After working with our purchasing department within the city, that's not necessarily the process that we need to go to. Once the board approves a contract once and the one-year extensions, then it's simply an administrative process to extend the contract. We don't need board approval again. However, I did want staff to still update you when we exercise those extensions. So even though your approval is not necessary, we still want to keep you in the loop as these are typically large spending obligations. It's already included in the budget you approved. It's already included in the contract that you approved initially, but we'll just do an update. So Robin's got a quick update on routeware.
Thank you. Robin Lawrence, Deputy Director for Solid Waste. So if you remember, RouteWare is our onboard routing technology that allows us to assign routes to drivers. Where they know where, what customers pick up, if there's any issue with a customer service, they can take pictures. And we can provide better customer service to our residents and commercial businesses. So our contract is coming up, or not our contract, but it's coming up due for the renewal for the next year. We're still very satisfied. We're being able to respond to our customers in a timely fashion. So we will be pursuing, continuing with RouteWare to provide service to our customers.
Thank you, Robin. Our next order of business, I'm not even going to say what it is. I'm going to turn it right over to Lucio Garcia, who has some really good news for us.
Good afternoon, Chairman Commissioners, Lucio Garcia, City of Los Cruces, Deputy Director for Gas. And it's my, it's my pleasure and I'm excited to announce that the City of Los Cruces Natural Gas Operations and Maintenance line of business was rated by the APGA Systems Operational Achievement Recognition Task Force as having earned a SWOR recognition at the silver level for twenty twenty. And as you recall, the past two years, we had been in bronze. So this is a step up for us and it's in line with our goal of achieving a goal as we move forward with our improvements and working with the directives of our director to improve our systems. Just briefly, I will give you a scoring, the four categories that they look at or four areas that they look at for the, for the SWOR is the employee safety, system improvements, system integrity and workforce development. The one that we scored the highest at, which was a ninety-eight percent, was employee safety. And with that, I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
That is indeed good news. Comments or questions?
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I guess that if there's a silver and a bronze, there must be a gold, right?
There is a gold and that's our next step, Commissioner.
Very good.
Thank you, Lucio. Our last piece of business regarding new business is the return to regular meetings. And when and if that will happen. Pursuant to the Los Cruces Utilities Return to Work Plan, our work plan has always stated that we will follow the guidance of the city council and match whatever the council is doing. Mayor Miyagashima mentioned at his, at the council before, I think, meeting that he would like to see us return to regular in-person meeting in July. And that would be compliant with the governor's announcement that we should be fully open for business by the end of June with the state opening by July first. So we would, we would like to follow the council's actions and start our in-person meetings in July.
This is William Little. That's good news. I want to ask each board member whether they are in fact comfortable with that and if they would like to see any practices or restrictions imposed on the meeting. Vice Chair Archuleta.
No, I think we have one more Zoom meeting in June and then we go to July to in-person. I think, I think, I don't know, probably most of us have been vaccinated. I have. And I think as long as we still have maybe a little bit of distance, I'm not sure about that. But whatever staff recommends, I'm comfortable with starting in-person in July.
Commissioner Ben Como.
Yes, I am comfortable as well. I'm also fully vaccinated and if folks are vaccinated, that works for me.
Okay. Let me interject. As a public body, we can't require that anyone be vaccinated. If we were a private company, we could say you have to be vaccinated, but as a public entity, we can encourage it, but I don't think we can require it. But if you're comfortable with, with returning, why, that's great. Commissioner Carmichael.
Yes, sounds good.
Commissioner Hardy.
Yes, I guess that was just my question before. Yes, I'm comfortable with returning to regular meetings in person and I have been vaccinated as well, whether that's required information or not. I feel quite comfortable with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I, I think I feel comfortable with it, although at one point I was thinking I wanted to see us reach herd immunity and I'm not sure we're ever going to reach herd immunity now with so many people not wanting to be vaccinated. But yeah, yeah, I've certainly got my vaccinations up and, and I'm, I'm ready to start it in July.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sorg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm fully vaccinated myself and I'm comfortable with meeting in July.
Okay, thank you. We will plan on meeting in person in this room in July. We'll ask our utility staff to orchestrate seating and separation and whatever else they believe is, is necessary. And we'll dive right in. Now, any other new visits?
No, sir.
Okay, board, oh, I okay, board general discussion and let me start rather than finish. When we do get around to considering the next draft of the water conservation plan, we do need to entertain a serious discussion of not only carrots but sticks. And that would include the, the fee for running water down the street and, and all that. But we want to make sure that that is, is an important element of the discussion next time around. Now, other board general discussion. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Como? Okay, Commissioner Johnson moves a second.
Archuleta, a second.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardy has something. Go ahead.
Before, yeah, I didn't know when to ask this, but are, is there any concern here that we're going to have this kind of ransomware hacking going on with our utility? Is anyone here utility even working on that or concerned about?
Okay.
Miss, Mr. Chair, Delilah Walsh, Utilities Director. Our, our city network, the actual network, and as I mentioned before, we're responsible for our software maintenance. But when it comes to the network and portals and open IPs and things like that, the city of Los Cruces IT Department is incredibly thorough in preventive maintenance and preventive action when it comes to hacking. And I, I, we consistently joke about IT and they don't let us do anything, but it's a good thing that they don't really let us do anything. And, and their, Mr. Scott Marr is our, our Director of IT. He's very, very proactive in ensuring our system is protected. And so we, in addition to social training as far as responding to certain emails and not opening things up, all our employees go through that as well as actual network protection. So, so it's constantly something that our IT department is looking at.
I concur.
Commissioner Hardy, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anything else before we vote on adjournment? Hearing nothing, those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we will see you on June 10th. Oh, between now and then, please calendar that work session for time.
Thank you.